Call the meeting to order.
Lash?
Yes.
Williams?
Yes.
Miller?
Yes.
Botts?
Yes.
Nichols?
Yes.
We have some minutes to approve, three sets, the first being from April 23rd, 2012, that's a work session.
Move for approval.
Lash?
Yes.
Williams?
Yes.
Miller?
Yes.
Botts?
Yes.
Nichols?
Yes.
Next, we have April 23rd, 2012, regular session minutes.
Lash?
Yes.
Williams?
Yes.
Miller?
Yes.
Botts?
Yes.
Nichols?
Yes.
And then we have some special meeting minutes from May 2nd, 2012. Move approval.
Second.
Lash?
Yes.
Williams?
Yes.
Miller?
Yes.
Botts?
Yes.
Nichols?
Yes.
Hey, under new business resolutions this evening, we have bill number 2012-28, a resolution authorizing the naming of the Mexico Memorial Airport Terminal to the Christopher S. Kit Bond Airport Terminal. This is up for reading and passage. Bruce?
Yes, your honor. At the last meeting, Steve Hagan was here and from the Airport Advisory Board to recommend and present this to you. We had asked that it be brought forward as an agenda item, so here it is. And I will turn to Russell Rung to go over the details of this.
It's pretty cut and dry. As much information, as much the kit has contributed to the area and to the airport itself, there was a group, Bruce Oliver and others, that felt that this would be a fitting tribute to him to rename it as such, and the Airport Advisory Board agreed to it as well. Steve is here again if you have any questions for either he or I. Thank you.
Seeing none, this is a worthwhile endeavor and that he has done so much for not only Mexico, but the entire state and our country and maybe the world, so, and still does a lot for our community, so.
May I want to read bill number 2012-28?
Second.
Lash?
Yes.
Williams?
Yes.
Miller?
Yes.
Botts?
Yes.
Nichols?
Yes.
Bill number 2012-28, a resolution authorizing the naming of the Mexico Memorial Airport Terminal to the Christopher S. Kit Bond Airport Terminal, whereas the Mexico Airport Advisory Board received a proposal to rename the airport terminal to the Christopher S. Kit Bond Airport Terminal, and whereas renaming the airport terminal would honor Christopher S. Kit Bond for his many contributions in support to Mexico, Missouri. Now therefore be it resolved by the Council of the City of Mexico, Missouri as follows. Section 1, the Mexico Memorial Airport Terminal shall be renamed as Christopher S. Kit Bond Airport Terminal to honor the many contributions that Senator Bond has made to the Mexico Memorial Airport and to the community of Mexico, Missouri. Section 2, this resolution shall be in full force and effect from and after the time of its passage. I move for passage of bill number 2012-28.
Second.
Lash?
Yes.
Williams?
Yes.
Miller?
Yes.
Botts?
Yes.
Nichols?
Yes.
Next, we have bill number 2012-29, a resolution authorizing the city manager to execute a use agreement with Presser Performing Arts Center for the use of Presser Hall. Bruce?
Yes, this is the annual contract for use of Presser Hall for city events, and I will turn to Chad Schumaker, Parks and Recreation Director, to cover the details.
Thank you, Bruce. The attached resolution would authorize the city manager to sign a use agreement between the City of Mexico and Presser Performing Arts Center. This is almost the exact same contract we signed last year with some very minor changes. The contract period for the use of the building is from May 1, 2012, to April 30, 2013, for an amount of $10,000. That gives us a maximum rental of 60 days during the contract period. Any use of the facility by the city for more than 60 days is an additional $300 for each day. One of the changes in there was that on section 2B was changed from a bluegrass event to an annual music event, and then I do believe that $300 a day price was changed. Otherwise, there were some, you know, minor ticks of language, a word changed here and there, just to clarify. So, staff recommends, of course, that the council would proceed with reading and passage of the attached resolution. It said our friends at Presser do an awful lot for this community. We, you know, they're great partners to work with, and hopefully this helps them keep being great partners.
I mentioned this last year, I guess I'll mention it again.
Yes.
So I made some calls this time around to make sure I was on solid footing here. We're like one of the only cities that does this.
Correct.
And Presser Hall is not, I mean, I understand at the time they were in deep financial problems. They just spent, what, $50,000 on a sign. They got all this money for the building, so I'm not quite sure, especially when we're going to get ready to go to the citizens and say, "We need park money," and we're doing something that no other community does, and that obviously I think they could probably stand on their own two feet at this point. I don't, I'm just kind of wondering where we're at.
I think the President of the Presser Board is here, if you'd like him to speak to that, but, you know, they are certainly in far better condition than they were when we started, when I started working with them 10 years ago. The city's been involved with them longer than that. There's been a lot of audience development under the bridge, there's been a lot of program development under the bridge, and they're definitely far more sustainable now than they were 10 years ago, more than 20 years ago. As to whether they're quite ready to stand on their own two feet or not, you know, that's a decision, obviously, for, you know, the council to make that policy call, you know, at the point where you guys feel like that needs to be done. You know, from our position, they are much more capable now than they were once upon a time, but I don't know that they're out of the woods yet, would be my guess. And if you want us to take a look at that, we certainly can take a look at that and work with their board to get you some more information if you want us to. I mean, that's, you know.
And my concern is, it's something most, nobody else does. I understand why we did it.
Right.
Now we're going to the community saying, "Pass the sales tax for the parks."
I understand that.
So I'm just a little concerned, and there doesn't seem to be any, there was a reason we did it, but there's no reason to stop. There's not an end, there's not like an end in sight kind of thing, you know?
I would agree.
"We got you on your feet." What does that mean?
I would agree. It's something I wouldn't want to terminate without some work and some study, but Yeah. If you want us to get the numbers and work with those guys and, you know, I certainly have not evaluated their finances, and if Steve wants to speak to that.
I'm more than happy to answer any questions or address Chris's concerns. But I got to be asked to speak, please.
Well, go ahead, yeah, I mean, if you can, if you want to come up and talk about what's going on.
I serve as President of the Presser Performing Arts Center. Couple things there, Chris. Number one, the arts is part of the culture of a community. It's also part of the quality of life, and so Mexico has, one, an issue about not only getting people into Mexico, but helping keep people in Mexico, as opposed to them going to Columbia to live, work here, go to Columbia to live, because they say there's nothing to do. So Presser directly impacts that. Number two, the sign that you specifically noted didn't come from Presser money, it came from donors. It was us going out asking for people to write checks to build that sign. Thirdly, the city itself has a quasi-entity called the Mexico Area Community Theater Group. That's not the correct term. What is it, Chad?
Mexico Area Community Theater.
That belongs to the city. They technically don't have a theater or an arena to perform in, and it is part of their, your gift to them as your entity to buy them space in Presser so that they can perform their art in that regard. And it's been my observation, at least in Mexico, things work best when nobody stands on their own and everybody partnerships and cooperates in order to get it to work. Does that help?
Yeah, I mean, that, I understand all that. My question still remains is, we're the only community around that does this anymore. Most communities, I mean, I understand why we got in, but...
Well, I don't know that we want to be like everybody. I would think we would want to be different. I would think we would want to set the trend as opposed to be a follower.
Yeah, I can agree with that. I'm just looking at it from a standpoint of the sales tax for the parks, spending money there. I would even feel better just to be donating the money, to be honest, because I don't understand why we're in the art, I just don't understand why we're in the business of putting on plays.
I can explain some of that.
That's not part of parks.
Well, it is. In most communities, when you have an arts council and arts development, it's usually housed in the Parks Department. But the Mexico Area Community Theater and the Mexico Arts Council were a direct result of a community plan, I think it was done 20 years ago, and in that the council brought in an arts consultant, I think it was from Denver, if I remember right.
I don't remember, Chad.
That looked at the community and what we needed to do, and the council's support of Presser was a direct outreach of that community planning process at that particular time, we did our master plan for the community, and it was something that people in Mexico came out and said, "We want this to happen." And so it was public opinion proven, its origination was. And we got those documents, if you ever want to see them, it's going to take some, because I ran across them the last time we did a study on the Arts Council. I know that they exist around here. It might take a little bit to find them, but we can drag those up for you if you want to see that.
Any further questions?
No, thank you.
Thank you.
I move for reading of bill number 2012-29.
Lash?
Obstein since I'm a board member of Presser Hall.
Williams?
Yes.
Miller?
Yes.
Botts?
Yes.
Nichols?
Yes.
Bill number 2012-29, a resolution authorizing the city manager to execute a use agreement with Presser Performing Arts Center for the use of Presser Hall. Whereas the Presser Performing Arts Center has renovated the Presser Hall building and would like to maximize its full use and benefit the citizens of this community, and whereas there is a need to have a facility to hold programs and activities, and whereas the attached use of Presser Performing Arts Center agreement would allow the city to use Presser Hall for up to 60 days from May 1, 2011, to April 30, 2012, the contract period, for the amount of $10,000. Now therefore be it resolved by the council of the City of Mexico, Missouri as follows. Section 1, that the city manager be authorized to enter into an agreement on behalf of the City of Mexico with the Presser Performing Arts Center for the use of Presser Hall. Section 2, this resolution shall be in full force and effect from and after the time of its passage. I move for passage of bill number 2012-29. Second.
Williams?
Yes.
Miller?
Yes.
Botts?
Yes.
Nichols?
Yes.
Okay, next we have bill number 2012-30, a resolution awarding the various on-call maintenance services bid to Randy May Construction and authorizing the city manager to execute a service agreement. This is up for reading and passage. Bruce?
Yes, your honor, this is an annual contract as it states for on-call services relates tobacco, excavator, equipment use, so when we have needs for repairing lines and so on, to cover the details of the bidding, we will turn to Ken Russell.
This is a contract that has been, or an item of service that's been in place for a number of years. Randy May Construction held the contract last year. His bid reflects the same prices for the coming year, and in addition, the bids were with an optional one-year renewal, which he agreed to hold his bids for that, or his prices for that third year as well. We had two bids, Randy May Construction was the lower of the two. We use this primarily for our sanitary sewer repair work, but we have also used trucking services for snow removal from the square and for helping haul asphalt, simply because he has a little larger truck and we can make fewer trips when we're laying asphalt with our street crews. And that is primarily what services that has been used for here the last couple of years. Like to ask for approval of the contract.
What is a working foreman?
That would be someone in charge of the job but actually performs part of the work as well. The operator of the backhoe might be the foreman on the job and would be a working foreman, as opposed to a superintendent or someone that doesn't do a material part of the job, but maybe does paperwork, tracking time and materials, ordering materials, that sort of thing.
So he doesn't work for us, he actually works for us, so you just tell him what needs being done, he takes them there, or what?
Correct. He's an independent contractor. When we have need of the service, we call, and in some instances, if it looks like a fairly large or complex job, we'll do an estimate of what we think that job should cost and ask him for a quote. We try to reconcile that so that we aren't just issuing a blank check on an hourly basis to him. Randy has responded well to emergency, short notice type situations. He has also held his costs in line with what we would estimate on projects. On average, our sanitary sewer repairs probably run about $2,200 to $2,500 apiece, some are less than that, but I'd say on average, that's about what it runs. We do a number of the shallower depth repairs ourselves, use Randy for deeper excavations and for some of the close quarter types of things where his operators are a little more skilled than ours.
I move for reading of bill number 2012-30.
Second.
Lash?
Yes.
Williams?
Yes.
Miller?
Yes.
Botts?
Yes.
Nichols?
Yes.
Bill number 2012-30, a resolution authorizing the various on-call maintenance services bid to Randy May Construction and authorizing the city manager to execute a service agreement. Whereas a request for bids was advertised for the various on-call maintenance services for the City of Mexico Public Works Department, and whereas Randy May Construction submitted the best bid for these services. Now therefore be it resolved by the council of the City of Mexico, Missouri as follows. Section 1, the city manager is hereby authorized to enter into a contract on behalf of the City of Mexico for various on-call maintenance services for the City of Mexico's Public Works Department with Randy May Construction. A copy of the service grade is attached as Exhibit A. Section 2, this resolution shall be in full force from and after its time of passage. I move for passage of bill number 2012-30.
Second.
Lash?
Yes.
Williams?
Yes.
Miller?
Yes.
Botts?
Yes.
Nichols?
Yes.
Next, we have bill number 2012-31, a resolution authorizing the city manager to enter into a termination of water service agreement with Missouri American Water Company, and this is up for reading and passage. Bruce?
Yes. You know, an unfortunate part of providing services is dealing with delinquent and unpaid bills, and in doing so, we have, from time to time, shut off water service supply in order to get compliance to get a bill paid. So this contract deals with that. To cover the details, I will turn to Roger Haynes.
Good evening. This agreement replaces an agreement that was entered into in May of 1994, whereas Missouri American Water Company was the successor of a water termination agreement between Missouri City's Water Company and the City of Mexico. The agreement authorize, authorizes Missouri American Water Company, at the request and direction of the City of Mexico pursuant to the provision of section 393.015 of the revised statutes of the State of Missouri, to terminate water service and discontinue the supply of water from its system to any premises at which the sewer bills for the service supplied by the city are unpaid. Having such an agreement executed provides the city an effective tool in collection of delinquent sewer accounts in lieu of property liens and direct disconnects of sewer lines to the city's collection system. The new agreement includes a reduction in fees charged to the City of Mexico for water termination and reconnection. The previous fee structure was $59.68 for termination of water service and $16.66 for restoration, a total of $76.34. Whereas the new fee structure will be $28.50 for termination and $28.50 for restoration, a total of $57. Like the previous agreement, Missouri American Water Company can request of the City of Mexico recovery of estimated lost revenue while the water service is disconnected. All costs charged by Missouri American Water Company to the City of Mexico as stipulated within the agreement will be applied to the respective delinquent sewer accounts. Staff recommends that council proceed with the reading and passage of the attached resolution authorizing the city manager to enter into the agreement with Missouri American Water Company. I would be glad to answer any questions.
Was this an attempt by the city to help with the landlords with their situation, trying to move the discodex ahead so they couldn't quite lose as much money on water service?
Well, we, again, this agreement is very, very similar to the one that is already in fact, in effect, it just lowers the cost. We did work with persons with the Landlords Association, of course, with Missouri American Water, to speed up our own process as far as getting the process started for water disconnects so that a landlord would not have as much delinquent account to pay for should their tenant not pay. But the agreement, again, is a much quicker way to try to get our payments rather than trying to file a lien on the property, which is, seems to be a bit more intrusive. And of course, the other option we have under city code is we could physically go out and dig up that sewer line and basically plug it, and again, that would be very costly and again, would not build the best rapport between the city and our citizens, so.
On schedule, or Exhibit B, the fee structure, it talks about their $28.50 for standard termination or restoration.
Yes.
But it's also included there unsuccessful attempts. How would you ever have an unsuccessful attempt? Are there water meters in basements and stuff that they can't get to them?
I can give you an excellent example. We had one a couple of months ago where we asked for the water to be disconnected, and Missouri American Water went out to the property, and the property owner parked their vehicle over the water meter so they couldn't get to it. So that would be an unsuccessful attempt.
And so the city, in this case, would be charged $28.50 for every one of those trips?
Correct. But we do apply whatever we are charged by Missouri American Water, whether it be those trips or a loss of revenue, goes on to that sewer bill for recovery.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Did they finally get the water shut off?
Yes. And they did pay.
Good.
Your honor, I would move for reading of bill number 2012-31. Second.
Lash?
Yes.
Williams?
Yes.
Miller?
Yes.
Botts?
Yes.
Nichols?
Yes.
Bill number 2012-31, a resolution authorizing the city manager to enter into a termination of water service agreement with the Missouri American Company. Whereas the City of Mexico is engaged in supplying sewer service to the citizens and residents of the city and the adjacent area, and whereas the city charges a fee for such sewer services and bills such fee on a periodic basis to its citizens and residents of the city and the adjacent areas so served, and whereas the city is obligated to collect delinquent sewer bills from its citizens and residents of the city and the adjacent areas so served, and whereas the Missouri American Water Company is the owner and operator of a water distribution system serving customers in the city, subject to the laws of the State of Missouri and the jurisdiction, rules and regulations in the Missouri Public Service Commission, and whereas the Missouri American Water Company is authorized, at the request and the direction of the city pursuant to the provision of section 393.015 of the revised statutes of the State of Missouri, to terminate water service and discontinue supply of water from its system to any premises at which the sewer bills for sewer service supplied by the city are unpaid. Now therefore be it resolved by the city, by the council of the City of Mexico as follows. Section 1, the city manager of the City of Mexico, Missouri is hereby authorized to enter into an agreement with Missouri American Water Company. Said agreement is attached heretofore as Exhibit A. Section 2, this resolution shall be in full force and effect from and after the time of its passage. Move for passage of bill number 2012-31.
Lash?
Yes.
Williams?
Yes.
Miller?
Yes.
Botts?
Yes.
Nichols?
Yes.
Next, we have bill number 2012-32, a resolution authorizing the city manager to enter into an agreement for water usage and customer identification data with Missouri American Water. This is also up for reading and passage. Bruce?
Yes, your honor. To bill for sewer, and our billing process is based on water consumption, so therefore we need the readings to do that, and this contract with Missouri American gets those readings for us. And to cover the details and the pricing, I'll once again turn to Roger Haynes.
Thank you. As Bruce mentioned, with the city not owning or operating the water delivery system, we are reliant upon the water suppliers to obtain water usage information for fairly calculating monthly water sewer fees to citizens, residents and others utilizing the sewer service. The proposed agreement includes a reduction in fees charged to the City of Mexico for water consumption and customer identification data. Currently, the city pays Missouri American Water Company 54 cents per line read, that's data per customer, which results in an annual cost of approximately $13,900 per year. Under the proposed agreement, the city will receive the same data as currently provided, but an annual cost of $3,000 per year, which is similar to what we were paying, let's say, 10 to 15 years ago. We paid about $225 per month. This would equate to about $250 per month. One aspect of this $3,000 charge, it would be a one-time payment rather than paid on a monthly basis of $250 per month. Staff recommends that council proceed with the reading and passage of the attached resolution authorizing the city manager to enter into the agreement with Missouri American Water Company. And again, I'd be glad to answer any questions.
Is computerization has made that possible by Missouri American Water, prices going down?
I think, yeah, they have changed their business plan a little bit on their focus, and I think they reviewed the cost and the time that everything was being handled through their process and charging us on a monthly basis. They also wanted to see some equity in what communities were charged across the board in their customer base, and they arrived at this $3,000 basis.
Is there an expiration date on this contract, or is it from?
It continues to renew unless there's like a 30-day notice to change it or get out of it.
Hallelujah, it's the last month.
Yeah, absolutely.
That's charging, I actually use this every month?
We, on residential properties, we do a four-month average, so it's based on usage during December, January, February, March, and then for any that are non-residential, it is on a monthly basis by usage. When we were at 54 cents a line read, that was a significant savings to our community by just doing the four-month average, so they weren't paying 54 cents for every piece of property in town every month.
Thank you, Roger.
Move for reading of bill number 2012-32.
Second.
Lash?
Yes.
Williams?
Yes.
Miller?
Yes.
Botts?
Yes.
Nichols?
Yes.
Bill number 2012-32, a resolution authorizing the city manager to enter into an agreement for water usage and customer identification data with Missouri American Water Company. Whereas the City of Mexico is engaged in supplying sewer service to the citizens and residents of the city and the adjacent area, and whereas the city charges a fee for such sewer services and bills for such a fee on a periodic basis based on water consumption to its citizens and residents of the city and the adjacent areas so served, and whereas Missouri American Water Company provides water service to customers in Mexico, Missouri through meter readings and estimates, collects certain water usage and customer identification information for its billing purposes, and whereas the city has requested that Missouri American Water Company provide certain water usage and customer identification information that the city requires to compute bill and collect its sewer charges, and whereas Missouri American Water Company is willing to provide such information in exchange for payment by the city, and whereas the city and Missouri American Water Company desire to enter into an agreement containing... desire to enter into an agreement containing terms and conditions of providing the water usage and customer identification data. Now therefore be it resolved by the council of the City of Mexico, Missouri as follows. Section one, the city manager of the City of Mexico, Missouri is hereby authorized to enter into a water usage and identification data agreement with the Missouri American Water Company. Said agreement is attached heretofore as Exhibit A. Section two, this resolution shall be in full force and effect from and after the time of its passage. I move for passage of Bill number two thousand twelve dash thirty-two.
Second.
Lash?
Yes.
Williams?
Yes.
Miller?
Yes.
Fox?
Yes.
Nichols? Yes.
Bill number two thousand twelve dash thirty-three, a resolution authorizing the city manager to execute contract documents with APAC Missouri Incorporated for asphalt improvements on various streets. This is up for reading and passage. Bruce?
Yes, Your Honor, this is for our annual asphalt overlay projects on various streets around the community. To cover the details of the streets and the bids, we will turn to Kenzie Russell.
As you can see, we advertised for bids and had three contractors bid, APAC Missouri being the low bidder this year. Christianson Construction had the bid for this work last year. It's my understanding that APAC will be doing other work in the area, and I expect that's one reason why they bid a better price for us this year than what we get in some years. The streets that we plan to do are listed, and Patrick's brought those up on the screen. The blue-colored streets represent those for the overlay. There is a portion of Ringo out in the west part of the community. We plan to basically complete that segment of Clark Street from the bridge south down to Monroe that we've worked on the last couple of years, and so that's included. And then a couple of blocks of Washington Street back behind Harden Park, and St. Brendan's is included this year, and there's a small piece of, I believe it's Elm Tree Terrace there in the south-central part of the community. The low bid of a hundred and eight thousand and approximately nine hundred dollars is a little less than what we normally do. That plus the cost of the microseal work is two hundred and thirty-two thousand, roughly five hundred dollars, which is within our, our annual budgeted maintenance, maintenance amount. As a result of having two pretty good bids for the microseal and the asphalt, we are looking at a change order after contract approval with APAC to add a couple of additional streets that would be in the Trolley Heights area. The Jackson and Monroe Street, the, that we're looking at, those streets are in need, and then time and material and dollars providing, we may be able to add Promenade as, as well. We do have our prices indexed to the MODOT Asphalt Index, so we want to keep a, a little bit of a cushion in our budget if that index goes up. I did see tonight where the price of oil had gone down again today, and we may be the beneficiaries of a lower index, in which case we may be able to add that street, but we don't want to be premature in doing that until we get a little, little farther along in the contract. We estimate that those two additional streets would be about seventeen thousand, which would bring us in somewhere around two hundred and forty-eight, two hundred and forty-nine thousand dollars, which would still be under our budgeted amount. So we're asking for approval of the asphalt overlay contract with APAC Missouri.
I move for reading of Bill number two thousand twelve dash thirty-three.
Second. Lash?
Yes.
Williams?
Yes.
Miller?
Yes.
Fox?
Yes.
Nichols?
Yes.
Bill number two thousand twelve dash thirty-three, a resolution authorizing the city manager to execute contract documents with APAC Missouri Incorporated for asphalt improvements on various streets. Whereas bids made pursuant to invitation to bid on the two thousand twelve asphalt improvements were opened on April eleventh, two thousand twelve, and whereas it was determined that the bid of APAC Missouri Incorporated was the lowest and best bid. Now therefore be it resolved, resolved by the council of the City of Mexico, Missouri as follows. Section one, the City of Mexico, Missouri accepts the total base bid of a hundred and eight thousand eight hundred and ninety-four dollars from APAC Missouri Incorporated for the two thousand twelve asphalt improvements. Section two, the contract approved herein is subject to RSMO dot two nine five dot six seven five, requiring the contractor utilize employees on site with the ten-hour OSHA construction safety training. Section three, the city manager is hereby authorized to execute on behalf of the City of Mexico, contract documents with APAC Missouri Incorporated, fifteen ninety-one Prather'sville Road, Columbia, Missouri, for the above described work. Section four, this resolution shall be in full force and effect from and after the time of its passage. I move for passage of Bill number two thousand twelve dash thirty-three.
Second.
Lash?
Yes.
Williams?
Yes.
Miller?
Yes.
Fox?
Yes.
Nichols?
Yes.
Last resolution we have this evening is Bill number two thousand and twelve dash thirty-four, a resolution authorizing the city manager to sign contract documents with Missouri Petroleum Products Company, LLC, for microsealing various streets. This is up for reading and passage. Bruce?
Yes, Your Honor, this is for the annual microseal project, and to cover the streets that we'll be working on this year. Once again, Kenzie Russell.
The last couple of years, we have done some microseal work. Microseal is a thin coating, it's a specialized asphalt, cement, and polymer-based material. We did Love Street last year, part of Teal Lake Road the year before. We're using that as a means to try to maintain the quality of our streets, the friction course, and, and seal the top from water intrusion, so that we don't have to do a more expensive overlay work on it nearly as, as soon. It's a technique to try to prolong the life of the existing street, has the advantage of being approximately an eighth of an inch thick, so we don't lose our drainage in our gutters and, and create bumps in all the driveways and things like that. So we're, we're trying to utilize that where it's warranted. This year, Missouri Petroleum was the only bidder. The, there are a couple of other potential contractors, but they are at farther distance, Kansas City, from us in Mexico, and we have not attracted them to the community in terms of bidding. We don't think that Missouri Petroleum has given us a, a bad bid, in, in that it's not excessively high for the work as we anticipated. The map is a little difficult to see, but again, in blue, the streets are highlighted. Perhaps the most significant thing that we're going to try to do this year is around the square. City Street Department did some crack sealing earlier this year on two sides. We still have two sides to do in order to prepare for the microseal. We anticipate getting that work done in the next week to ten days. Then other streets are, are listed here. Robin Hood out in the west, Sidedown Webster there in the central area of the city, completing Teal Lake Road down to the bridge to the east, and then the little piece out on the west end that was not done two years ago. Then Lakeview, we've been doing some milling and patching work there in the last week or so. If you've driven it, sometimes it's bumpy and sometimes it's smooth, depending on whether we've got it milled out and, and whether we've got the patch back in or not. Those, I think, are the major streets, piece of Clark, piece of Washington there. I might mention that we choose these streets by virtue of a pavement rating system. We're using a, a system that is repeatable, depending, you can have two or three different people rate a street, and they will be within a, a point or a half a point with their ratings. Independently, it's, it was developed for federal highways. We have that set up in a Excel spreadsheet. It will be a part of our GIS also, so that we can see at a glance on a map what the condition of our streets are. Microseal is appropriate when a street is rated at about a four or five. We do the asphalt overlay when the street is in worse condition than that. A ten would be the very best condition of a street. The system allows us to rate gravel, asphalt, and concrete on an equivalent type of rating. And so we are choosing our, our maintenance techniques in our streets based on those ratings and, and trying to address, and, and bring the overall rating of our street system up as we, as we go through each year.
I may have asked you this question last year, and if I did, just give me the same answer again. Do we ever get to the point where we can do this, this in-house?
The microseal, we do not. We are able to do some small overlay work. We have a small paver, and, and we can do some small patches with the paver, or, or limited blocks of streets with our paver with an overlay. But the, the microseal takes a, what's called a slurry box. They actually carry a tank of oil and the dry material, and it's mixed right at the back of the truck into a slurry box, and the box spreads it out as, as they go. And so it's, it takes a, a little more single-use type equipment than what I think would be wise for us to try to put into our fleet.
I don't think I've ever watched them put that up before, so I'm gonna try.
Perhaps not. We'll, if, if you're interested, we'll, we'll certainly try to let you know when they get set up and, and going. They bring a, a screen in and set it up at the maintenance yard, so they screen their dry material before it goes on the truck for uniformity of size, and, and then they load the truck and, and move it out to the street.
I'll just bring my boots and get dirty.
Yeah, we'll be glad to have you. Just bring your safety vest, too.
Make a motion, I read Bill number two thousand eleven thirty-four.
Second.
Lash?
Yes.
Williams?
Yes.
Miller?
Yes.
Fox?
Yes.
Nichols?
Yes.
Bill number two thousand eleven thirty-four, a resolution authorizing the city manager to sign contract documents with Missouri Petroleum Products Company for microsealing various streets. Whereas bids were pursuant to the invitation to bid for the two thousand twelve microseal project were opened on April eleventh, two thousand twelve, it was determined that the bid of Missouri Petroleum Products Company was the lowest and best bid. Now therefore be it resolved by the council of the City of Mexico, Missouri as follows. Section one, the City of Mexico, Missouri accepts the total base bid, a hundred twenty-three thousand nine hundred, five hundred and ninety-two dollars and ten cents for Missouri Petroleum Products Company. Section two, the contract approved hereon is subject to RSMO two nine five dash six seven five, requiring the contractor utilize employees on site with ten hours of OSHA construction safety training. Section three, the city manager is authorized, hereby authorized to execute on behalf of the City of Mexico, contract documents with Missouri Petroleum Products Company, sixteen twenty Woodson Road, St. Louis, Missouri, for the above described work. Section four, resolution shall be in full force from and, after the time of passage. I move for passage of Bill number two thousand eleven thirty-four.
Second.
Lash?
Yes.
Williams?
Yes.
Miller?
Yes.
Fox?
Yes.
Nichols?
Yes.
Our old business ordinance this evening, we have Bill number two thousand twelve dash twenty-two, an ordinance calling for an election in the City of Mexico, Missouri, on the question of reducing the property tax levy for the parks by ten point zero zero cents per hundred dollar assessed valuation, imposing, imposing a sales tax of one-half of one percent for the purpose of providing funding for local parks, designating the time of the holding of said election, and authorizing and directing the city clerk to give notice of said, of said election. This is up for second reading by title only and passage. Bruce?
Yes, Your Honor, this ordinance allows the local park sales tax question to be placed on the August seventh, two thousand twelve ballot. Council has discussed this ordinance at, at great length, I would say, in the last couple of meetings, and we did have the first reading at the last meeting. Therefore, counsel, unless you have any additional questions for us to answer, staff would just recommend you proceed with a second reading and passage.
I do have one question. I saw this letter to the editor thing, and I don't believe this was said, but if it was said, then I would like to know it was said. One of the councilmen said that if we need more my layer, we can just roll the book, roll, roll the property tax back. I mean, if that's the attitude we're gonna have, then I'm not, I'm not for that. I mean, I'm not gonna say, let's do this, and just to fake people out and then jack the property tax right back up. So I don't know if that's a true quote or not, so I'm asking, did somebody up here actually say that? Because I don't remember anybody ever saying that. I didn't think so. I just wanted to clarify.
That was one thing that bothered me when I read that in the paper, and I tried to call Mr. Pop that night, and couldn't get hold of him to find out which council member said that, but.
You have a hand up back there, man.
Would you like to come forward, Mr. Pop, and make some comments? We'd want to remind you that we do limit our comments to three minutes generally, so...
It won't be long.
Okay.
I do appreciate you letting me come forward and say a word about this. I hope you read my letter that I printed in the paper, head printed in the paper, and I don't see how the City Council of Mexico can sit there and ask us to pay a half-cent sales tax for all the people surrounding Mexico, which brings in a vast sum of money that we don't have a privilege to vote on. That is not fair whatsoever. And if we didn't come trade in Mexico, how long would your stores last? They'd shut up like Wellsville, like all the small towns. You don't think we're needed? That's what you're saying. We ain't needed. And that's what comes forward. But we don't have a privilege to vote on it. And that ain't fair, people. I don't see how you can ask us to do that. Think about it before you vote. Would you be, feel the same as I if you lived in the country, and all the people surrounding areas that do all our business in Mexico? We keep your stores open. That's all I have to say. Please, think about it. How would you feel if you sat where I sat, and all the surrounding people in the area? Thank you.
Appreciate your comments. Move for second reading by title only of Bill number two thousand and twelve dash twenty-two.
Second.
Lash?
Yes.
Williams?
Yes.
Miller?
Yes.
Fox?
Yes.
Nichols?
Yes.
Bill number two thousand and twelve dash twenty-two, an ordinance calling for an election in the City of Mexico, Missouri, on the question of reducing the property tax levied for public parks by ten point zero zero cents per one hundred dollars assessed valuation, and imposing a sales tax of one-half of one percent for the purpose of providing funding for local parks, designating the time of the holding of said election, and authorizing and directing the city clerk to give notice of said election. I move for passage of Bill number two thousand twelve dash twenty-two.
I'll second.
Lash?
Yes.
Williams?
Yes.
Miller?
Yes.
Fox? Botts?
Yes.
Nichols?
Yes.
Under other business, this evening, we have a staff report. It's on the mowing abatement contract.
Yes, Your Honor, from time to time, we have property owners that don't mow their lawn, and we have to deal with it. And therefore, we have asked for some bids to get a price on doing that. And I will turn to Rita Jackson to cover the bids that she's received and the details of this report.
The mowing abatement contract is a necessary service as it pertains to code enforcement for the enforcement of tall grass and weeds. The two thousand eleven and two thousand twelve budget allows forty-two hundred dollars for the mowing abatement service contracted various locations throughout the city. This service is for properties that either have been abandoned, or they have deceased ownership, or they are actually in foreclosure. The abatement mowing consists of actually going out and mowing the yard, trimming all the necessary areas around the sidewalks and the buildings. And in some cases, we have to sometimes remove debris and trash from the yards. City policy requires that once the abatement contractor gets the contract, they have within five days to mow that yard. An advertisement for bids was placed in the Mexico Ledger on April the twelfth. It was also mailed to thirty local contractors. Bids were received on April twenty-sixth. With six bids being received, our low bid was from the Handy Shop in the amount of twenty-five dollars per hour. Currently, the City of Mexico has an abatement contract with the Handy Shop. And during the two thousand eleven, two thousand twelve fiscal year, the city has expended three thousand, two hundred and seventy dollars in mowing abatement. To date, we have collected six hundred and sixty dollars. Throughout the year, we still collect money, because some people don't always pay their taxes at the due date, and they pay them throughout the year, and we still collect that money. Staff recommends that council approve the bid of the Handy Shop of the City of Mexico in the amount of twenty-five dollars per hour for the mowing abatement contract.
So, we pass this cost along to the residents that don't mow their grass, right?
Actually, we mow the grass and then it actually becomes a tax lien against the property. And at the time they pay their property tax, we recoup our funds if they pay the taxes.
So, if it takes two hours, it charges fifty bucks, correct?
Correct.
Then, we charge them fifty dollars.
We actually have additional expenses that we can charge for administrative part of the contract.
That's what I was getting at.
Yes.
Because I can't see us getting a good deal for someone that don't want to mow their yard.
Well, actually, sometimes it could be a good deal if the way you look at it, because if you have someone that it's no one to mow the yard, and we're getting complaints, it's something that I think we really have to do and try to recruit the money any way we can.
Your Honor, I would move for approval of the contract with the Handy Shop.
Second.
Lash?
Yes.
Williams?
Yes.
Miller?
Yes.
Botts?
Yes.
Nichols?
Yes.
Next, we have a staff report. Public Works Maintenance Division, purchase of replacement heavy-duty truck bed. Bruce?
Yes, Your Honor, to cover the details of this bid, we'll turn to Kenzie Russell.
This is a truck bed we had in the budget to replace the two thousand six International truck that it goes on, is still in good condition. The bed that is on it is the original bed. We use this truck for hauling demolition concrete and large rock, and essentially, we've worn the truck bed out. So, we took bids to replace that. The first go-around, we only had one bidder, and we thought that we should be able to attract more than one, so we rebid and got two bids the second time around. And as you can see, they're pretty close in price. Viking Siv's Midwest was the low bidder at twelve thousand, one hundred and fifty dollars. This is a little above our budgeted amount of ten thousand, one hundred and eighty dollars. We can make up the difference from other line items in our budget in checking about difference in cost, because we had checked on what the cost of a bed might be when we did our budgeting. It's primarily in the cost of steel that has gone up. So, we are asking for approval of the purchase from Viking Siv's Midwest of the truck bed for the two thousand six International. And with the stipulation that we make up the difference in price from other budget items in the Street Department budget.
Where's Morley, Missouri?
It's down by Sykeston. It's a little bit like Mexico and Vandover Village. You're not quite sure when you're in one or the other. It's just on the I-55 side, just north of Sykeston.
And we, do we have to take?
Chief can probably correct me if I'm.
Between there and Benton.
Yeah, there you go. If you get to the hill, you're in Benton.
Do we have to take the truck down there for that to be installed?
No, they will actually come and get the truck, mount the bed, and deliver the truck back to us.
All included in the bid?
All included.
I move we accept the bid from Viking Siv's Midwest for the truck bed for twelve thousand, one hundred and fifty dollars.
Lash?
Yes.
Williams?
Yes.
Miller?
Yes.
Botts?
Yes.
Nichols?
Yes.
And then, we have, under C, other business, we have a motion to hold a work session in the second regular meeting of the month on Tuesday, May twenty-ninth, two thousand twelve, rather than our normal Monday, which is Memorial Day, so. Bruce?
I don't have anything to say, but I mean, it's just changing the date because of the holiday.
Okay. I guess I move that we hold our next meeting on Tuesday, May twenty-ninth, both the work session and the second regular meeting of the month.
Second.
Lash?
Yes.
Williams?
Yes.
Miller?
Yes.
Botts?
Yes.
Nichols?
Yes.
Next, we have the claims.
Second.
Lash?
Yes.
Williams?
Yes.
Miller?
Yes.
Botts?
Yes.
Nichols? Yes.
Okay, council comments. Councilman Botts?
I have nothing this evening.
I'd like to commend the parks. The parks look really good. I was at the Children's Mental Health Day. Somehow, I completed a five K run. I'm not quite sure how that happened. Finished, finished, I finished. But, the parks look really nice, so. And I've noticed around town that you guys are working hard and trying to.
Councilman Nichols?
Oh, Mr. Pop, I was going to thank you for his comment. The people of Mexico do appreciate the community surrounding Mexico, shopping in Mexico. And we don't want to do anything to run them off. And on the meantime, we have to keep Mexico going in a positive direction. And the council is not saying we're going to raise the taxes, we're going to put it to the vote. So, I'd hate to think that one or two people stopped the whole time, have a chance to vote on the half cent, so.
Senator Miller?
Your Honor, I was reminded the other day about how much we depend on volunteers and how what good work we get from volunteers, but I want to commend the Missouri Military Academy. They had some young men, I think they have them out there about every week on Friday, picking up stuff out of Lakeview Park. And that's really appreciated. The parks, people are spread pretty thin as it is, as everybody knows. We have some representatives here from Missouri Military Academy. I'd like to commend the academy and the young men that participate in that. Thank you.
Your Honor, I have a few things here. As the ordinance has now passed to set the sales tax for a vote, I want to remind anyone out there that if you would like someone from the city to speak to you regarding, you know, educational sessions on the sales tax and how it's being used, what it's going for, and all the things that are necessary there, we'd be glad to do that. And we have a number of those already set up, but we'd certainly entertain any others that would like an opportunity to be heard. We are in the process of doing the electrical upgrade and switch over here at City Hall. And as you, we've done that, we've also encountered some problems. Like, have you noticed this evening, the elevator's not working? Then, we had some air conditioning issues earlier that we got resolved. And now, we have found that there's a, as the switch over happened, there's something, and I don't understand at all, Mary, you probably very clearly do, is there's a neutral problem somewhere in the system? And they're going to try to run that down in the morning. So, anyway, one thing usually leads to another, and it has led to a few things, and we're working on those as we move forward. Govdills.com, as you know, we did put the in loader on that versus looking at the trade-in value. The trade-in was at thirty-four thousand. The last bid that I seen as of today was that it's up to forty-three thousand, fifty dollars. So, it was certainly the right way to go by putting that on there. The other thing is, is that Boone Hospital Center does put out this, I guess, say it's their educational magazine or whatever. Yeah. Propaganda, yeah. As part of this, the Boone staff, as far as the employees there, shared their favorite spots for summertime recreation. And Mexico made the list. And it talks about the Lakeview Park in Mexico, and it's paved walking trails, and that they really enjoy the birds in the park and the geese on the lake. And so, it was, it was nice to see even folks in Columbia recognize our park system as a place to enjoy. So, I just wanted to bring that up as well. Thank you.
Welcome to our guests from MMA this evening. Anytime that you want to come visit us at a council meeting, do come, feel free to come. And we appreciate that. Anything else? We need public comments. Do we have any other, anyone in the public who wants to make any comments? Seeing none, I move we adjourn into executive session pursuant to six ten point oh two one three of the revised statutes of Missouri personnel, Missouri pertaining to personnel.
Lash?
Yes.
Williams?
Yes.
Miller?
Yes.
Botts?
Yes.
Nichols?
Yes.